You're representing a lot of people tonight. We need a good, we need a good agenda to pack the place.
No we don't.
Right, so. Bill, what do you think of the carpet?
Smells good.
I know, it smells clean.
It's probably adhesive.
That's okay. Ready to rock and roll?
Direct floors, do it one night.
National Director. Actually, as I say that, I'm like, oh, I haven't given Frank a chance to.
It's awful.
What book did you read to the kids this morning?
What book? Humpty Dumpty After the Fall or something?
That's what I read.
Oh, did you?
And did the kids pick up on the fact that he turned into a bird?
They did.
One kid, I love this, one kid says, yeah, but how could he? Because he was scrambled.
Well, that's pretty funny.
I've never seen that one before.
The follow-up to Humpty Dumpty? When you're ready, and we will kick things off here. Are we good? Good, good?
Yep.
All right, let's do this. All right, good evening. Select Board meeting here Tuesday, March 4th. This meeting will be held in hybrid format. Select Board will attend in person. Members of the public may attend in person. Not so crowded this, this week. Bill, you're representing a lot of people here. In addition, members of the public who wish to participate via Zoom may do so by joining. Go to the town website, click on tonight's meeting. There's a link right there. If you don't have access to a computer, there is a dial-in number. And as always, the info packet is there, so you can click on and follow the contracts that we'll be talking about tonight. And also important to disclose that this is being recorded, so it will be available on YouTube and Hill TV almost immediately following this meeting. So on that note, let me take a moment of silence here, appreciation for our troops serving around the globe in defense of our country. Thank you. All right, so. I don't see anybody on yet. No, all right, so we, our first is supposed to be a public hearing for Sunrun for, look up, yeah, first name, last name. Jagi? Should we go with that?
Gachajin, Kachajin, or Kachajin.
So do we want to skip over that and see if he joins us?
Yeah, let's give him a few minutes, but we can maybe we'll keep moving.
Okay, keep moving. I know we, there's a lot going on here after the meeting. All right, so let's kick off then for action items. We have a board committee appointment, resignations, Medfield Outreach Advisory Committee to accept the resignation of Molly Frankel.
Big loss for them. She's an attorney and a very active, good person, so.
Yeah.
Too bad.
Unfortunate, but, so is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, and those in favor, all in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye aye, excellent. All right, vote to approve the contract with American Service Company for the fire alarm system replacement at the library for eighty-three thousand dollars. Jump to my info packet, I believe, Pete, do you have any questions?
Well, my questions had to do with the fact that it was eighty-three thousand dollars. It looked like it was very little work and an exceedingly long contract. I guess maybe they're making up for the little work by the size of the number of pages in their contract or something.
It's a retrofit or something. I believe it's a retrofit or retro upgrade or something.
Yeah, but it was like five things, like a new sensor in the ceiling type of thing. It was very, struck me as very little work, but. And the other thing that struck me is how expensive it is to do work, so.
I don't have any questions, and I know that.
I've been through all these building contracts with Ben, and then Ben in turn ran them by Gus.
Yeah, Gus had called me towards the end of last week to let me know he was all set with everything.
Okay, all right, so do we have a motion?
So moved.
Did we read, need to read the motion or just?
I vote to, move to approve the contract with the American Service Company for the five, the fire alarm system replacement at the library for eighty-three thousand dollars.
All right, second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, vote to approve the contract with Suburban Glass and Mirror for window repairs at the library, and that one is forty-three thousand eight hundred and forty.
Move to approve the contract with Suburban Glass and Window for Window Repairs at the Library for forty-three thousand eight hundred and forty dollars.
I just have a quick question for you, Christine, on that one. That's, they've been doing a little bit of work. That's the second time I've seen Suburban Glass and Mirror.
Yes, okay. Yep, they've been bidding on our projects.
They did the windows in this building, I think.
I don't know, I don't think so, but they have, I think they actually were on the FAFS Center before.
Yeah.
We had.
We've had them before, but I don't think, I don't think it was the ones here.
I thought it was the ones here.
All right, so I second that, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye aye. Vote to approve the amendment for extension of time for the contract with Beta for the design of the COA garage.
So moved.
So the update on that, so they're, they've, they have moved along, they've decided where the garage is going to be, Christine?
We now know the location of the garage, and they will be going, I believe they have a meeting with the Board of Health and with Conservation or Planning, if I'm remembering.
Planning, the Board of Health meetings next week.
Okay.
So where'd they finally decide to put it?
It was in the location that we had chosen at the Select Board meeting. They all agreed, yeah, but then we had to negotiate how many parking spaces we would have to give up around there, so that kind of stalled us out a little bit.
Okay.
So we're back, yeah, we're back on track.
All right, fabulous, so you, you already read the motion, so I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye aye.
Vote to approve three thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars from the Economic Society Fund to be used for electrical work at Baxter Park.
So moved.
And this is for the, the lighting or anything?
This was some electrical work that needed to be done just before the holiday stroll. We needed to get it done in order to continue with that at the beginning of December.
Do you think this is the last bit of work that needs to be done, other than the flagpole for the?
As far as I know, I'd have to follow up with Parks and Recreation, see what else they have planned, but as far as electrical, this should be it.
Okay, so the only I would ask is that we, we actually get from them to confirm that, that either Baxter Park has significant more work to be done, or if the last thing we know that's left to be done is the flagpole, just to, because this keeps popping up, these random little things.
Is, is the flagpole expensive, Chris, do you know?
I don't know, I think the problem was they were having a trouble finding a contractor coming out to do the work, but I've been told it will be done for Memorial Day this year.
You talking about the big one, the big American flag?
Yeah.
I have a recollection of that being replaced at some time in the last.
About twenty years ago?
That long? It was expensive at the time, whenever it was.
Now there's just a piece that's broken that needs to be fixed.
So you can't bring it up and down, so, so I think there's been a couple of times where it should be at half mast and it was not moving in the right direction. Okay, all right, so you have seconded that, so.
I moved it.
All right, you moved it, so I'll second that, and all those in favor?
Aye aye.
All right, vote to sign the contract with Beta for a site design and stormwater plan for the proposed modular to be located at Hinkley Pond for Parks and Rec. Any update on what's happening there?
We actually had, we had a call with, with Beta today. So they're, they're fully underway in making sure that the site plan is ready for Board of Health and Planning Board review, hopefully by the end of this month.
Okay.
So that'll hopefully give us enough lead time to have the modular delivered, and then still have time to do some site work before June 1st, which is when Parks and Rec would like it fully operational.
And so site work being hooking up electrical, hooking up?
Electrical, water, sewer, we may need to put some concrete down for accessible parking and/or a walkway around the, one of the two sides of the modular to make the entrances and exits accessible as well. So our facilities team has used the sort of draft site plan that Beta has prepared to start preparing the bid documents to get all of that out, so that we don't have to wait until the final plan is approved by the Board of Health and, and the Planning Board.
Do you know the status? Say we're going to pave that parking lot. Did it get paved? They haven't driven by since.
Hasn't been paved yet.
And that's now on the back burner with all the other stuff going on?
I think so.
Yeah, yeah, I think they were still sort of in the, the early stages of getting the stormwater design done from, from their own engineers that, that Parks and Rec had hired. So we're hoping that we'll be able to use them, some of that information to give to Beta, to make the project a little bit easier and cheaper.
Yeah.
Because we would have already done some of the work from an engineering perspective, but we're still waiting to hear back and get some of that information from those engineers.
Okay. All right, motion?
So moved.
So did you already read it?
Yeah. Vote to, move to sign the contract with Beta for a site design and stormwater plans for the proposed modular to be located at Hinkley Pond for Parks and Recreation.
Right, second that, all those in favor?
Aye aye.
All right, vote to accept the SERSGDPW Service Awards three-one, twenty-twenty-five through two-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-six, we have a year contract, and authorize the Director of Public Works to sign the contract.
So moved. So I had a question about this one. I mean, this seems like a, it's a huge laundry list of all kinds of different individual items, and like, the one that fascinated me the most was that snow shovelers were a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour.
We don't, we don't utilize those from this contract, but yes, there's some interesting things in here that are available if you would like.
So this isn't, this isn't stuff that we're all going to use, it's just, it's what, it's, it's like a menu, and if we are, if we need any of these, we just pull them off of there, okay? This whole.
You should see what some towns or municipalities have had to pay for snow plowing.
This is that whole joint purchasing thing that Mo got us into, which is such a great benefit.
Really good for us.
Yes, oh yeah, it was so great that Mo brought that with him from Easton.
All right, so, and we, and I don't care if we don't do this, so we don't have to read each of these, if you just do so moved, if I've read it, that's, that's good enough to afford, that works for me. All right, all those in favor?
Aye aye.
All right. Vote to approve the contract with Amanda Decker to help in writing and submission of the drug-free communities grant.
So moved.
I have a question on this one. So I know I worked with Amanda Decker with Medfield Outreach, is this an extension of what we worked on before?
So this would be the next five-year contract. So we did the first five-year contract, then we got the six through twelve, this would be the next one.
After the six through twelve? Oh, good.
Yeah, it's my understanding that's what they're working on.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, but she was fabulous, so.
She got us the money, so.
All right, so you have so moved, so I will second that, so all those in favor?
Aye aye.
All right. Vote to approve the event request subject to public safety approval by the Medfield Little League to hold the opening day festivities on Sunday, May 4th, twenty-twenty-five. As with past years, teams will gather at the Dale Street parking lot at three-thirty, and at four PM, we'll parade from Dale Street School to Mediacomic Park. Opening ceremonies will follow the parade, and will end with the first pitch of our baseball game at approximately five o'clock.
So moved.
All right, second that, all those in favor?
Aye aye.
And this also counts as your invitation?
Yeah, well, we got the email, that's how, I, I haven't missed it in the last three years, that's all I'm saying.
I'm sure everybody knows they're invited.
Vote to sign the letter of support for a broadband equity grant allowing Comcast to complete the broadband installation connection, excuse me, connecting fifteen Medfield addresses that are considered underserved or unserved. So what does that mean? What's, what's going on there?
So there are, there are fifteen addresses in Medfield that do not have access to broadband capability, so Comcast is doing a grant, identifying these fifteen addresses, and if so, we'll be able to put that into those fifteen addresses.
Because of the age of their home, because of the location of their home, we don't know why?
I think it's location.
That's interesting, okay.
So moved.
All right, I'll second that then, all those in favor?
Aye aye.
Consent agenda, vote to, to allow signs at the usual locations advertising Art and Bloom from April 6th to April 13th. So are we to then read off that the intersection of North and 109, the transfer station, I think that's rather vague?
We just do usual locations, and then we manage that.
Okay, all right, in the past, we've had to go through all those little various locations.
Yeah, we, we took them off because they're the, they're the same locations, and when we contact people, we let them know what the.
Yeah, actually, I think designated in the bylaw itself.
So moved.
All right, second that, all those in favor?
Aye aye.
All right. All right, meeting minutes, we'll pass on those, since Gus is not here, the best we can do is say we've read them, but. Town Administrator update.
I have a couple of things, just a reminder that Medfield TV is doing a candidate forum on March 19th in this room from two to seven-thirty PM. On March 18th, we will have the Fire Chief interviews, we have two internal candidates. On March 18th, we will also have our continued discussion of the On-X proposal, it's not on the agenda this evening since Gus is not present. We are continuing to work towards the warrant hearing on April 1st, where I anticipate we will be able to submit a balanced budget to you. And then, number five, I'm just looking to get your support, we have been asked repeatedly over the last two weeks to sign on to the remote and hybrid meetings.
We have.
So if it's okay with you, I will answer on your behalf, as well as on my behalf, that we continue those meetings.
I was separately asked by the MAPC to do that, and I signed on to.
Okay.
Ask for it, it's such a good idea.
Okay, so I will, I will send a, a letter on our, on everybody's behalf, and then I will talk to the MMA and contact our delegation.
It's about the only good thing that came out of COVID.
It really has increased our public participation.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, but some committees, there are some committees that have asked to go back, and some have not gone back at all, so I think there's a, there's, I think what would be nice is if at least every so many meetings, if people have been going remote, try to at least bring it forward so that people can have face-to-face. And then, if need be, but I, that's where, that's where I don't want them to get away from it, but I also don't want anyone to be using and to not have face-to-face, because I think face-to-face is essential.
So I think the important part for me is that it allows the people at home to tune in and see the meetings without having to come to the townhouse.
Oh yeah, no, I don't, I don't disagree with that, but I think there's times where every commission should have the ability to be live together, right, so, so the group as a commission is together, and then people can come face-to-face if they so choose. But to your point, Pete, if they're, if they're remote, if they're not feeling well, it's not like they can't sit in, because like, I'm thrilled that Parks and Rec has finally got to do the recording their meeting, so if you can't make it, you can either dial in or watch the recording later. So that be that, anything else for your Town Administrator report?
Nope, that's all I had.
All right, so we have next meeting dates being two weeks from tonight, March 18th, March 31st is our annual municipal elections. Follow-up the next night with a Select Board meeting on April 1st, April 15th, we still have the placeholder down for April 29th, and then we have our annual town meeting on May 5th.
It's all rapidly approaching.
Is April 1 the Warren Committee hearing?
That is the Warren Committee hearing, so it'll be, it'll be a Select Board meeting and Warren Committee hearing.
April 1st?
April 1st.
Okay.
And yes, I know that is April Fool's Day.
All right, Pete, Select Board.
Yes, thank you. The Medfield Foundation had a, it had its annual community conversation last night, and it was actually a very fascinating discussion with the people from DSA, Ted, and I think it was Kendra was her name. Who I hadn't met before, came and talked to the gathered people about Ted's company, DSA, helps nonprofits operate and, and fundraise, and so, and they just have tremendous amounts of knowledge about how to do stuff. And they just shared it with all the people that came. In addition to that, I've been getting a lot of emails about the basketball, the use of the land, and that's it.
All righty, I've got a couple of things since last week. I participated this morning, I don't know if people know that today is Read Across America Day, so various members of the, the public or the towns were invited to go read to fourth and fifth graders at Dale Street. So I had a chance to go in and read for Mrs. Buff's fifth grade class, it was a lot of fun. We were talking before we kicked off.
There's my sticker.
That I, I selected the book After the Fall, which I did not know that there was a follow-up to When Humpty Dumpty Fell Off the Wall, so it was really good, that was really fun, I'm glad I got invited to do that. Had a meeting yesterday here with SAFE, Kathy Thompson, excuse me, Kathy Thompson, Kathy McDonald, we sat in a meeting where we had to share our thoughts on as we get the opioid fund dollars. There's going to be some public sessions, Christine, do you have those handy? I know there's three community, I'd like to actually voice this if we could put it out there, I, my bad, I shouldn't.
They, they have a, a, a community survey too, that people can answer the questions in the survey and give their input.
Yep, community survey, and then they're going to do three public, I think it's like during the day, during the afternoon, and then, and you can read them off there, Christine. But they're really trying to get feedback from the residents as to, you know, where people believe this, the money can go, and I think, I don't remember my notes in front of me, it was like a hundred and seventy thousand dollars or something like that, that, our rough percentage of what we're getting from the, the settlement from, to the state?
Currently, what we have now, it's about fifty thousand a year.
Okay.
And some of that is earmarked towards our, towards a substance abuse staff member.
Okay.
I do not have those in front of me, unfortunately, I didn't pull those up either.
Let me see if I have that, because if, if I can give a little PR to those guys and let them know the meetings, I know Kathy was passionate about making sure everybody knew, give me one second. I'm sure Medfield Outreach has it on there. Let's see what we got here. Let's see. We'll do one more thing, and then I, we can always bring it up again, because it's, I know it's over the next week and a half, yes? Trying to find Kathy's email.
Yeah, I was doing the same, I don't.
If the apple can show up.
Not that we've seen yet, no, let me check, double check, no.
This was a really long meeting, I would feel guilty doing this, but since we're involved.
Here we go, Thursday, March 13th, six to seven-thirty at the Medfield Public Library.
Great.
Saturday, March 15th, nine to ten-thirty at Medfield COA, and Tuesday, March 18th, six-thirty to eight, and that is a virtual learning session, virtual listening session.
Okay. And, and that's, we know, we're working with SAFE to try to gather as much input as possible, and that's where the three learning sessions to allow the community members to have, who have lived the, the experience, or who have been impacted by the opioid epidemic, to share their views on the utilization of the abatement funds to Medfield. So definitely, and as Pete said, the survey's out there, and if you. So definitely, and as Pete said, the survey's out there, and if you go to medfieldoutreach, you can get it all right there. I've got an Affordable Housing Trust meeting on Thursday, I know the town, I want to say, either on Monday or Friday, we got the, 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 the clock is ticking now for the next 30 days for the 98 Plain Street Development.
86 Plain Street.
Yeah. So that's, I talked to Maria yesterday, we will talk about that as a board on the 18th, but I just want people to be aware that we, we did receive the packet from the developer, and now we've got 30 days to comment back to the state. And I had, I've never done this, I had a chance to go on a tour of Montrose, I did that last Tuesday, and that was really fun, that was, and I can't recall if I said it in my meeting last week when I was giving my reports. Beautiful campus, amazing what they've done with the, with the, the building, I know they're looking to do some construction in the back, they're looking to renovate a building that used to be with, where the Kids Borough was. And super nice tour with two young women, one was a freshman, one is a senior, what a nice campus, so, never had a chance to do that. And other than that, like Pete, I've certainly have been receiving emails, trying to respond, I've got some personal stuff going on that has completely drained me over the last few days, and I've got 48 hours more of taking care of some stuff. But I will try to follow up everyone that, I've gotten people that are passionate to have this, 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 this sports facility, people that are concerned, but I think the only thing I'm going to say tonight just simply is, this is so, in like light number two pencil, we have not committed to anything other than to just listen to someone bring an idea forward, and to get the conversation underway, but there's nothing locked and loaded by any stretch of one's imagination, and this, we, this does not mean that we would write an RFP strictly for something like that, it's just get the conversation going, get the emails keep coming in, the more feedback we can get, I, I'm happy to hear what people are thinking. I know there's a concern about, you know, the cross-country team right now uses a particular path, so people are just sharing all sorts of concerns and questions, and I, I welcome all of that, because we're so early in this process. So other than that, that is what I have. Anything else? Bill, you have any questions, comments, concerns, you're good?
Move to adjourn.
All right, I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye aye.
All right.
Just going to notice, when it's the two of you, we are in and out.
You just set a record.
Why is that? Why is that?
I'll have to do some research and get back to you. We love you, Gus.